This is Tuesday, April 1st. This is the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. I hereby call it to order. Tonight, I will lead you guys in the pledge, and then I believe Ms. Harmon will lead us in invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the opportunity to gather here to do the work of the town. Convict us to remember that we are here together to do what's best for Andrew. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, let's start with the agenda. We've all got the agenda before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Amendment to the meetings from March 4th?
For the minute?
Yes.
We'll do that next.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
One more. I've got one more. Can we move the public comment to the end of new business?
That's a discussion we can have, and I had thought about that. There's a lot of people on here, but I'm afraid...
Because that way, we can just get through to the business that we have on hand that we need to get done.
I find it very important to hear from the citizens, especially as many as there are on the sheet.
Right.
I would hate for them to have to wait too long, considering that we always do them at the beginning.
Especially if there's something on the agenda that they came to comment on. Is there a motion for that, or...?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we move the public comment to the end of new business.
All right, any further discussion?
For what reason? For what reason?
Just to get through to, with everybody we've got to talk and all, just like to get through to the business that we have on hand.
I don't... There's a long agenda. We do have one, two... Eight items on our agenda. For those that want to speak before we go through that, I think that they should have an opportunity to do so. Should the board allow for a public comment at the end of the meeting? I think that might be appropriate as well. But to have citizens who potentially are speaking on things that they've read in the agenda, that they have an opinion about, should be able to share the opinion before the decisions are made. That seems as to brush them off as though it's not important what they have to say.
No, it's not important, it's just, you know...
Then let them speak before.
Mayor, why don't you ask people in the congregation if there's something that's on the agenda that they would like to speak to, or is this just to make a comment?
They don't have to.
There are six people who have signed up. Just raise your hand briefly if you would like to speak at the beginning.
There's a majority of them.
I noticed everybody, so... That's up to you guys. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of moving the public comment, raise your right hand. Opposed? Steve, are you going to vote?
It's a favorable vote.
Oppose.
Okay, so it's a tie, and I will say that we'll keep it at the beginning for now, just because that's what everyone expected. Other than that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Next up, consent agenda. We have the minutes and updated salary scale. I understand that there is going to be an amendment offered for the minutes.
Yes.
Mr. Crisp, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir. Section in old business, item number two, a motion that I was made and was subsequently amended by you. And the motion that was voted upon was the amended version of the motion. So I feel like the motion should be at least credited to me and/or to you.
To me? I don't think, I'm not allowed to make motions, so I don't think there's ever a case where a motion is credited to me.
There was an amendment made by you.
I offered an amendment. I mean, I'm happy to put my name on it. I just don't think I'm allowed to make motions.
At the very minimum, I think we should, you should take credit for the amendment that you did make.
I'm trying to find it here.
It's right here.
All right, so it says in here that Mayor Eustace stated that the motion should be amended, I'm sorry, to clarify that the board is allowing Ms. Bishop to read her letter of resignation if she chooses to, but she is not required to read it. I think, I mean, to me, that summarizes what happened. I really, I just, I don't think my name could be on a motion.
Okay, well, we're just at least amended by, motion by me, amended by you. Would accurately say that.
The paragraph reads Commissioner Crisp motioned to have former chairman to read her letter. Mayor Eustace stated the motion should be amended.
Into which you would have to accept said amendment in order to maintain the motion.
To vote on it, yeah.
The...
So we could, we could add that you amended your motion right after that line where it says, "I should amend it." I just...
It's just not accurate the way it was written. However, you got to fix it, it's probably fine with me. It is not inaccurate.
All right.
Once you make an amendment in any form, formal situation, once an amendment is made, the amendment is either shared, or the bill is either shared or owned by the person that makes the amendment.
So could we add a line after the statement about me?
Just put a hash mark after my name and put your name.
Steve, I don't know if we could do that.
Amended by, or just put amended by. The amendment that was voted on was the one that was amended.
So in the body of this, we could add a line after that sentence that says Commissioner Crisp amended his motion.
But I didn't amend my motion. You amended the motion.
I made a suggestion, and then you said the new motion.
Okay. I'm not seeing that that's the way it happened. I felt as though the motion was changed, and with the input of Mr. Herzog, the attorney, that's what we voted for, is the changed motion.
Well, let me suggest this. Maybe we table the approval of the minutes for now until we can look at the video of the meeting and see. Because I don't know, I don't think I could put my name on the motion part. I mean, I don't mind to, but I don't, I don't think I can, so... All right, so...
I'll move to table it until the next meeting, when we can give us a chance to take a look at the minutes and approve them at the next regular meeting.
I think it would be wise to direct Liz as to what you're looking for. Do you want it to be verbatim quoted, or...?
We've discussed it.
And...
But we'll discuss it and see what, I mean, I'll advise her what...
When you discuss adding his name to the motion, which is not an option, so...
Okay. Well, we'll just have to look at it and see what the... Because what happened was what happened. If this is a reflection of what actually happened, then whether the rules were broken or not, it still has to reflect what happened. It doesn't reflect what happened that was correct, what is actually what happened.
All right, well, let's table it for now, and then we'll watch the video and see.
Because I, for some reason, I don't think we can table it. I think that we can amend it later, well...
Can we amend the consent agenda approval?
We just would only accept March 18th minutes and updated salary scale. We would remove the March 4th minutes, the question minutes, from the consent.
Yeah, and they would remain unapproved and automatically end up on the next one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to do that?
I think that's probably the cleanest way. Would you like to make that motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda less March 4th, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. All right, it is the first of the month. We have public comment tonight. Anyone may speak on any issue. We don't have any public hearings, so I won't go into that tonight. Before speaking, please state your name and address. We ask respectfully that you keep your comments to under three minutes, because we do have a full agenda. And typically, the board will not respond to any comments here tonight, or we may defer you to town staff or someone else to make sure it gets handled. I have six people signed up. Let us start with Fran Bishop.
Good evening, Mayor Eustace and town commissioners and town officials, everybody. My name is Fran Bishop. I live at 98 Buddy Campbell Court. I come before you tonight regarding the grievance that I filed on March 10th, following the February 18th special called meeting of the Andrew Town Commission. I spent several days debating with myself whether or not to do this tonight, and I decided it was in the best interest of my neighbors to be brave and do it. Since I have not had any communication since filing, I feel it safe to assume there will be no action with regard to my grievance. I feel I need to share two important matters with the town residents. Number one, the grievance outlines in great detail the false statements that were made with regard to the Andrew ABC Board, from which I recently stepped down. As Chair of the ABC Board, I had personal concerns with regard to cash management decisions, disbursements, and an eroding profit margin of the store. Never did I imply, state, or even hint that there were any laws being broken, simply that I was not in agreement with board decisions for which I had no vote. I highlighted 10 issues in this four-page grievance, but will not take the time to read each one. I will, however, mention a couple. I've brought copies of my grievance letter, and will be happy to share them with anyone interested in knowing what the Town of Andrew Commissioners decided not to act on with respect to false accusations by a sitting Commissioner, Mr. Kazikavich. I also have a full recording of the subsequent ABC meeting, where absolutely no action was taken on the four issues raised by the incoming Chair. Not his fault, he was misinformed and made judgments with few facts. But it is his responsibility to know the appropriate laws, as it was mine. Number four of my grievance of 10 is as follows. At the meeting, at the 11-minute and 15-second mark, I quote, "Mr. Kazikavich said, 'One of the things that are not in compliance with GS 18B 702A is one of the things is operating without a budget. We have not seen a budget, and we have not seen an audit from last year.'" This takes me to number five on the grievance. When Commissioner Harmon corrected Commissioner Kazikavich with that there is, in fact, an audit and a budget in place, he said, minute marker 1216 of the meeting, "That was not an audit." Okay, my response. "I personally spent many hours preparing and presenting a very detailed and comprehensive presentation on the ABC Board, once in June of 2024 and one more recently in September of 24. Every one of the Commissioners was present with a physical copy of the adopted fiscal budget, complete audit findings, invoices for the auditor, the entire slide deck with copies of the fore and after slides showing the audited results being published and implemented per the $30,000 third-party audit. Next steps, what we have accomplished to date as a board, along with copies of all the bank account reconciliations. Also in the packet was a full copy of General Statute 18B 701. Since my three minutes are up, Galen's going to read the rest of my statement."
Thank you.
Okay.
Galen Bishop is next.
So continuing, disparaging and lying about an appointed ABC Board member is atrocious and makes Commissioner Kazikavich unfit for public, to be a public servant. Item number two, the Town Commissioners held an open meeting to appoint the new ABC Chair. Only one candidate was present, and a second candidate was not able to attend, which does not disqualify them, but there is no way to ask them questions in a public forum. The first candidate was asked and answered in the affirmative that the 9:00 AM meeting time on the second Thursday of the month was doable. The second candidate, who was, according to his own words, interviewed outside of the public forum by at least three Commissioners, who all were aware that the 9:00 AM meeting time was not accessible for him due to other commitments. The Commissioners voted to appoint the second candidate and make him the Chair of the ABC Board, knowing that there was an issue with the schedule. And I might add, the first candidate was very qualified. First of all, the Town Commissioners have only two roles with respect to the ABC Board, appoint and remove with cause. Nothing else falls in their duties with respect to the ABC Board, as the Town Attorney explained to Mr. Kazikavich at the last meeting. There was a special meeting of the ABC Board to address the remaining issues, and one of them was to change the meeting times back to the evenings so this Chair could attend. Speaking as Fran, I was the Chair for a little over a year. I have never seen this gentleman at an ABC Board meeting even one time, much less a town meeting. He, Mr. Alexander Davy, sent emails he received from the Commissioners to the ABC Board to let them know that if they did not remove, did not move the meeting time to the evenings, the Town Commissioners would be changing the Town Charter to compel them to do so. This behind-the-scenes game-playing is the opposite of transparency. Town Commissioners have only two roles with respect to the ABC Board, appoint and remove with cause. Nothing else falls in their duties. I do not intend to cause any trouble with these statements. I point these things out to get them on the public record, and therefore, to allow the voters in this town to do their research and ask the hard questions before you vote for the three open Town of Andrew Commissioner positions on the ballot in November. If you want to continue to have a revolving door in the boards in this town, keep voting these people into office. If you want change, find someone who is qualified, willing and able to run, to remove them, and start changing this town as we all had hoped for in the last election.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bishop, if you have a document that you were referring to and you'd like to leave it with the town clerk?
I'd be happy to.
Okay. Next is Brian Hawley.
Good evening. My name is Brian Hawley. I live at 49 Carey Lane Drive in Andrew. I'm here to address concerns regarding transparency, accountability, and the need for unity within our community. I have submitted information that I respectfully request to be entered in the public record, my intent to contribute to more open and transparent dialogue, ensuring that the public has access to important information that affects us all. In recent months, I have observed actions and decisions that, in my view, have contributed to division and diminished public trust in our local government. It is my firm belief that the leadership should be built on honesty, transparency, and consistent application of policies and standards. The people of Andrew deserve governance that fosters trust, fairness, and accountability. My concerns regarding Mr. Eustace and Ms. Harmon stem from events that occurred while I served as Chairman of the ABC Board. Mr. Eustace, I trust you recall a particular meeting where tensions ran high over the water tower issue, during which my wife was personally affected. However, this situation extends beyond that single event. My family, my wife, my daughter, and my son has been impacted in ways that I believe warrant further reflection. I raise these concerns not to dwell on the past, but to emphasize the importance of treating all individuals with fairness and respect. I have gathered documentation and video evidence that highlight these concerns. My motivation is not personal retribution, but rather a commitment to ensuring that all members of our community are held to the same ethical and professional standards. Serving the public is a responsibility requires making difficult decisions, decisions that should always be guided in integrity and the best interests of the people we serve. Over the past year, I have witnessed decisions that seem to be selective interests rather than the broader good. Transparency and accountability should not be selective. They should be fundamental principles that guide our actions. To that end, the documents I have provided include evidence that the Andrew ABC Board may not be in compliance with open meeting laws, particularly regarding the scheduling of its meetings. Additionally, I have identified areas where meeting minutes are, do not fully adhere to the state regulations, specifically GS 18, 201, and 18700. Furthermore, I have formally requested that Mr. Eustace and Ms. Harmon be held to the same ethical standards that have been applied to others, including my wife. Consistency in government is crucial to maintaining public trust. Additionally, I have included concerns, including the Andrew Museum's compliance with state bidding laws. As outlined in NCGS 143131, ensuring adherence to these standards is essential to maintaining transparency and fiscal responsibility. Ultimately, my goal is not to create further division, but to encourage a renewed focus on ethical leadership, open communication, and fair governance. Our community is strong when its leaders demonstrate integrity, fairness, and genuine commitment to the principles they uphold. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Hawley, you referenced some documents. If you'd like to leave them with the clerk, we'll be sure to include them. Next, Steve Pollack. I'm not sure if I pronounced that right. Pollack, all right. Sure?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the board. I appreciate your time in letting us speak tonight. My name is Steve Pollack. I live at 107 North Broad Street. I am here to respectfully request that Town of Andrew consider vacating an abandoned alleyway directly behind my home. This alley is completely overgrown, obstructed, and hasn't been maintained by the town in years. There is no vehicle or pedestrian access. It does not appear to support any active town utilities. The trash pickup occurs on the front side of the property, not in the rear. You can see from the pictures in there that it's very, very overgrown. I also attached GIS mapping to show that part of that alleyway has already been absorbed by a neighboring property. We recently had to tear down a guesthouse structure that was removed for safety and structural concerns, but since its removal, I've noticed an increase in unusual foot traffic behind the house. Just this past week, while working in my backyard, I heard someone moving through the thick brush, which, as you can see in the pictures, it's pretty thick. And just a few yards from where my dart swing is set up, there was a man urinating on our fence. Unfortunately, this is not an isolated incident. There have seen other individuals passing through and lingering in that area. So this raises some serious safety and privacy concerns for my family, and especially for my wife. She is concerned about taking our daughter out in the backyard to play. I do keep woodworking tools and equipment in my shed, which backs up to this alley. This does present with an increase with unusual foot traffic, brings some safety and theft concerns. I did speak to the adjacent property owner across from the alley behind us, and she is okay with either splitting or me taking ownership of the property. I would like to point out that that alley does meet several definitions of public nuisance under Article 2, Section 14-11 of the Town of Andrew Code ordinances, specifically the harbors of overgrown vegetation and potential pests. It allows unsanitary activity near residential play areas, and it creates a health and safety concern that the town may be obligated to address if the alley remains in public control. Given that the town has not appeared to be maintaining the space and is not currently conditioned to... Currently conditioned possesses health and safety issues, I believe it is both reasonable and beneficial to the town to vacate the alley and allow adjacent owners to take responsibility for its care. I appreciate your time and consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You did all the work.
That's very thorough, thank you. Do you have any more copies of this with you?
I gave one to the town clerk.
Okay, she's got one, okay.
I think there was one for each of you.
That's good, that's perfect. We'll make sure the town manager gets a copy too, and we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alan Coats, I have you next.
Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. My name is Alan Coats. I live at 131 South Wilma Street in Andrew. I question whether even walking up here to speak, because it always seems to backfire, no matter what your best intentions are and where they go. And I sat there for four years and went through the discord that I know I see still happening, and I'm hoping we can work through those things. But I'm here tonight to ask about one thing, and I'm sure the public is with me on asking this question, as many as I could ask. But I'd like an answer as to what are we doing about hiring a new town manager? We've gone two months with that seat open. I am told there has been no advertisement to seek the seat. Ms. Hawley, you have gone through two of these replacements, so you do know what's involved. Mr. Kazikavich, you've been through one with me. We know what's involved. We are members of a league that we pay good money to for dues that are qualified to help us in our situation. And that's how we got an amazing Mr. Hicks here with us for six months. And I don't understand why we aren't using the league to help us find... It's free, doesn't cost a thing. And we had Mr. Hicks here probably in about two weeks. He stayed with us six months, helped us prepare a budget. And then the league will help you look for the new people, review them, make recommendations, send them to you. We sat through the first group. We didn't like what was there, we did it again. I can't get an answer as to what you're doing about hiring a new town manager. Now, while I love our Chief of Police, he is in no way qualified or has experience. Had he been there for two weeks while you found somebody else? But I don't see any intention of changing this situation. And I don't expect him to do two jobs. I thought our police department was swamped, and he is needed out on the streets and helping his men, not sitting behind a desk for the town. We are in the same situation. We're looking for other jobs. We are going into a budget planning right now, and we don't even have a finance director. I don't know what we're doing, and I can't seem to get an answer. So I encourage you to get together and make a statement. What is the plan? And when we don't get one, I think, well, there's a hidden plan that I don't know anything about. And that opens up a huge pocket, of which we all are aware of, could be. But don't leave us flopping out here like that. I encourage you, find us a town manager, get a qualified person in there, and as you go into budget, starting on Friday... I couldn't have come up with a budget. I don't think our Chief of Police can come up with a budget. I don't, some of you are so new, I don't... Anyway, that's it. I encourage you to please step up and maybe give us an answer as to what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coats. Junior Price.
Junior Price, 8173 North Carolina 210 North. To start with, I want to address this to the Commissioners. I have been advised by Mr. the Mayor's attorney that I cannot speak with him or his family, so I'm addressing this to y'all, okay? When the last Members ran, I had a lot of hope that transparency and unity, which y'all talk so much about, would be followed. I am very disappointed in some of the alleged stuff that's going on with the Andrew Depot and the Andrew Museum. There is allegedly investigations going on that could bring criminal charges, that could remove people from the board if they're found guilty. People's license could be revoked, contractor's license. The Town Attorney knows about this. As far as I know, he hasn't addressed it. He hasn't come out publicly and said something about it. If I had my say-so about it, I would advise the board that we need to replace our Town Attorney and get someone here that works for the board and the town. Okay? He's not even here tonight. He has a representative representing him. But we have four or five people always on Facebook spreading gossip, spreading rumors. These are the facts, people. The stuff that happened at that depot is the facts. We need to do something about it. I'm asking that the town, somebody, goes public and lets the people of this town know where we're at in that investigation. Okay? I mean, I think it's whoever's investigating. I've reached out to Senator Burgen, and... I mean, I think it's whoever's investigating, I've reached out to Senator Burgen, and he says that it's been handled. Someone needs to let the public know. We got the same amount of people that comes to these boardrooms at all times unless there's a public hearing about something. Same four or five. We have an ex-town board commissioner that knows better to do what he did, and he went and done what he done. It needs to be handled, and the truth needs to be told. And whatever happens after that happens, if we had to replace people, we replace them, but the people need to know. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. That's all I have. Signed up. Is there anyone else for public comment tonight? Well, thank all of you guys for keeping that brief and right at the three minutes. I appreciate it very much. And we can move forward to old business. Old Business Number One says we are going to look at the Juney Road Water Tank Options. Again.
Hope everyone's doing well. I'm coming for you tonight to, let's discuss your choices as far as having the text on the water tower say, this is Anger. Or are we gonna vote to put the town seal on the 500 gallon water tank located on Juney Road? The financial impact for this is Anger would be nothing because it's already in the bid. If we decided to do the town seal, it would be an additional $15,645, which would not impact the bill because we got a contingency already in this project of well over $100,000. So we should be in good shape. But the choice is just to make if y'all would rather have the seal or this is Anger.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. So I shouldn't be surprised, but I still am. The expense of some of this stuff, $15,645 to switch from this is Anger to the town seal. And I'm sure, I'm sure that it's justified, but I don't know, guys. That's, that's.
So may I ask a question? The, how often do we have to paint these water tanks? How long is the lifespan of that, whatever decal we put up there and having to come in and repaint?
I'm not mistaken, it's every five years.
Wasn't it eight though?
I was thinking it was seven or eight.
Yeah, I think.
I know that we have a contract, we have a service contract on it that includes the painting of it.
Correct.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So how often would we do the painting? Between five and eight years? Some said five, some said eight.
It's something five to eight years. I'm sorry, I apologize. I don't have that.
We could do it at any time. We would just have to pay for it.
And it's, and it's $14,000 almost to change the decal.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, sixteen, forty-five.
Fifteen and a half thousand. Okay.
And that is a decal on both sides of the tank.
Well, the other one, I noticed it just says, this is Anger. And I think we just keep them the same.
I mean, I'm inclined to just make it say Anger.
Anger, absolutely.
Or Anger.org. They probably wouldn't charge us extra to take off this is, would they? I mean, I don't know. I know you don't know the answer to that. Honestly, I know you don't know that answer. I'm thinking out loud.
I don't see that.
I'm thinking out loud.
Yeah, most towns, it just says, you know, the town like Cary just says Cary.
Yeah.
You know, so.
And I like the seal. I really like the seal because it's on the Juney Road tank right now. But I mean, you could take all the junky cars I've bought in the last 10 years, and it doesn't add up to $15,645. So that's a hard, I'm sorry, that's how I compare things.
Yeah, I think if we just leave it say Anger on it, I think that'll be work for me.
Town of? I mean, you know, it's like one additional letter. That's a thousand dollars.
It's not an additional letter.
No, that's, that's included.
This is Town of, same number of letters.
I mean, I don't want to hash this out continuously, so.
I know this water.
Should it, should it, should it not stray from the budget?
Yeah, we can call the design team and get other options as far as.
I don't know. What do you guys think of Town of Anger?
I'm fine with either way.
Let's.
This is Anger or Town of Anger or just Anger.
Anger's fine.
Let's, maybe we could cut some time and.
I've never quite understood this is Anger. And I know that I don't have any say so on it, but.
No, but your inputs are appreciated.
We didn't understand it either.
I think it was supposed to be a slogan for a marketing campaign, and it never came to fruition, and I get that. But I wonder if we could make a motion, if that's what we decided, to allow you to move forward with Town of Anger if it does not have an additional expense. That way, when they get back and they say, no, it's the same price.
Move forward.
You can run with it.
They say it's a different price. We stick with this is Anger?
Well, probably.
Or just Anger.
Just Anger, well, I heard.
Yeah, but don't tell them that. Get the Town of.
Yep, I think we just told them, but we'll, I won't say nothing else.
Okay. That feels good to me. I, that's, that's a ton of money for.
I make a motion that we go ahead and let Lee find out if there's any, you know, addition, additional cause or cost or whatever. But yeah, if you can find out if we can do Town of Anger, if this is Anger.
Do you want to go ahead and approve Town of if there's no additional expense?
I say go ahead and approve it. Is that okay with y'all?
Yep.
What's the will of the board?
I say we approve both of them. Whichever one is less expensive. Or about.
They ain't gonna give us no money back.
I think they'll probably go with Town of.
I think they will. We'll ask them real nice. Would you like to amend your motion to what we just?
What we just said.
All right, so correct me if I'm wrong. The motion is to approve Town of Anger wording, so long as the expense is not more.
And I think that would be.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous.
Thank y'all.
Clean. All right.
We can save that money for something else.
Absolutely.
Old Business Number Two, Derek is going to present to us a revision to Budget Amendment Number Nine.
Where's Jimmy when we need him, right?
He can't listen to his.
He's probably in, out of Philly's game.
Yeah. Basically, this is the budget revision. When me and Chris did the budget amendment, we actually should have increased it, and we decreased it. In the line item, it didn't affect anything. Just when we went to post it, we realized we, we had a typo there and we corrected our mistake. So as you see in the highlighted area, this is just to amend the budget and revise the Budget Amendment Number Nine.
All right, so the meat of this, we have already approved, and this is just fixing a typo.
Yes.
To make it correct.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve revised Budget Amendment Number Nine with the typo mistake showing the corrections highlighted in yellow.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous.
And guys, Brandon's gonna need those water meters because he told me yesterday that they, they set 102 water meters for the month of March.
We'll go get them tomorrow.
That's awesome.
All right. All right, we're moving to new business. Jeff is going to present to us Operation Homefront Fee Waiver. Good evening, Jeff. I feel like we haven't seen you in a while. It's nice.
Good to see you, Mayor, members of the board. Tonight I have a request to partner with Meritage Homes. Recently, Meritage Homes reached out to the town to talk about Operation Homefront, which is, which is a program that Meritage Homes operates throughout the southeast, wherever their communities are. And it awards a home to a military family through a selective process. And they have chosen Anger to be one of those locations. And they have asked the town if we would like to participate in refunding the fees. They've already started the home. It's in the River Glen community. And the fees that they've paid so far for building and system development, the fees is $10,594.75. And so when Lee and I talked about this, we thought it might be beneficial to bring this to you all to have a discussion and have you all discuss waiving the fee for this program. Meritage Home has not selected a recipient as of yet. That is ongoing. But once a recipient is selected, there will be much more fanfare and publicity that goes along with this, this home and the giving of this home to the recipient. So more to come. This is just sort of, are we willing to partner with Meritage Homes on this program?
Is it your understanding that they're gonna totally give this home free of charge, unencumbered?
It is. So I did a little, little research background on, on the, on the program. And they select a deserving family, and they work with that family over a two-year period to, you know, go through their financials, make sure that, you know, they're in a good shape to when the deed is given to them at the two-year mark, they can move forward and have a productive life in, in the community that they're choosing to live in. So it's not right of way. It's not the day that they move in, but it's after a two-year period of financial counseling and going through that process with, with Meritage Homes folks.
Didn't this organization do a home in Fuquay or Cary, somewhere local?
I think Fuquay, I think Fuquay.
I think so.
Any other questions for Jeff? Any discussion?
I think it's a good organization.
I think it's a great, yeah, that's.
I mean, as long as they, as long as they give the house for totally free, and then we're not just giving them extra profit, I think I'd be in support of it.
They've been watching this program now for years. They do it all over the country. And it's to a deserving military family that they had, somebody was either wounded. Most of them were either wounded in, in combat and, and can't get really back on their feet.
Seems like a great organization with a great, great offering.
There's no further discussion. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the waiver, the fee waiver for Operation Homefront as Jeff outlined in item number one A in the new business.
All right. Any discussion?
Just want to specify the amount, and the amount of $10,594.75.
And you sure that's accurate?
It is.
If it changes, would it matter on our waiver?
It's, it is the exact amount that they've, they've paid, yeah.
Mr. Chris, would you like to amend your motion to include that?
Yes. I don't have it written in front of me. $10,595.
$94.
$94.
Seventy-five cents.
Seventy-five cents.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous.
Thank you, Board. And as I find out more information, I'll share that with you. And hopefully one day in the future, we can have the recipient and Meritage Homes here to talk to you all.
We're, we're pleased that they have chosen Anger for this, so.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. New Business Number Two, Derek is going to present to us supplemental agreement for additional right-of-way services. I couldn't abbreviate that one, huh? All right.
All right. So this is part of the LAP project for the Juney Road sidewalk, part of the right-of-way acquisition. I inherited this from Jimmy. He said there was three properties that we had to do the land condemnation on. So this is basically coming to you guys to, to get approval for the agreement here to make sure that we move forward with the land condensation, condemnation on the, for the right-of-way acquisition.
Where's the money from this come from? Do we have this in the budget?
Yes, we have. Yes, it's part of the, the ongoing LAP project for sidewalks. So we do have money for right-of-way acquisition in the line items.
And just to be clear for everybody, and you please correct me if I'm wrong. That gray powder on the side of Juney Road is not our sidewalk project.
It is not.
The reason that we have not started the sidewalk project yet is because there are three properties that we have not yet secured right-of-way, right-of-way for the sidewalk construction. And that is what we're hoping to do tonight is to move forward on that final acquisition.
That is correct, and that is time consuming when they have to go through with this stuff. It's not like going to knock on the door and get the right-of-way. You have to go through the, the proper channels, and it takes a little more time. So that's, that's why we're here, and that's why the project's been delayed a little bit.
That's fine. I've heard lots of questions about why it hasn't been done and all kinds of reasons. But that is the reason, right now at least, is we don't have the right-of-way to start it.
That is correct.
All right. Any questions for Derek? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the supplemental agreement with Telx in the amount of $23,950.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Derek, you have the next one too, number three.
All right, this is a MOU agreement with, with the property owners that we are purchasing at the Campbell Street, in the Campbell Street to be able to put a driveway entrance to the, the new park. We had Dan draw up an agreement for us because the, the property owners there now are concerned about, they don't want to be mandatory annexed in. And it was kind of a gray area on whether they would have to be or wouldn't have to be. And in talking to Dan further, having multiple conversations on the phone through Zoom, we felt like this was a special circumstance for them. And we feel certain now that, that we're at an agreement with this, this MOU just in front of you guys, that they're good with it, we're good with it, but we want to get y'all's blessing so we can move forward with the closing date. So we can actually, the town can actually officially own that land.
All right. Any questions for Derek on this one?
I thought we talked about this when we first talked to them about that, that this was all under.
They are not into city limits.
Right.
Yeah. I believe we were, we were okay with that.
And there was, there was a gray area on, on the ordinance about how close you can be to the city limits property, which is subdivision of it that backs up to the property. And is it property line or is it structure? And the way we're reading it now is it's structure.
Right.
So, so it was kind of a gray area there, and their concern was they don't want to be forced to annex in. So we certainly want them to be happy, and we want to move forward with this purchase of this parcel of land because we have to have it to move forward with the park entrance. So we've all come to an agreement. And, and the, the landowners have been really, really easy to deal with and very accommodating for us. And what's held this up is their bank has held them up with this. And we just got to the, we got to this point the other day when they were reading, and they were like, they wanted to make sure that something wouldn't get forced on them later, later dates. So that's why I'm in front of you.
Puts it in writing.
Yep.
Great. I make a motion to approve the MOU as written by Town Attorney Dan Hartzog.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. All right, Derek, number four.
All right, I got one more. All right, the, the new police station project. So basically, what you got in front of you is a capital project ordinance. And the reason we're doing this is we want to be able to roll this project and the money over from one year to the next without having to come to you to do a budget amendment every time we start a new physical year because it's going to be a multi-year project. And we've got money in the budget this year. There's going to be money in the budget next year and, and the year after that as well. So the reason we want to go ahead and get this project ordinance passed is because it lets us roll it over without having to come to you from year to year. So that's, that's pretty much the gist of it. You guys had already approved the financial impact amount. One update on that. Hopefully we'll find, we'll hear some news from the league here soon on the audit. So we can get that USDA and we can get moving forward with the police project, so.
Okay. I think you've explained it very well. Basically, the only way that we can hold money across budgets for, well, specifically for capital improvements like building a building like this, is to have a capital project ordinance.
That's correct.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the capital ordinance project for the new police station as written.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. All right. You have to come back for number six.
Yes.
Austin. Thank you for joining us tonight. We'll have you anytime. You are welcome.
Evening, Board. Happy to be here. All right, so the first thing I've got in front of you guys is our Parks and Rec Capital Improvement Plan. So we're in the process of applying for the Parks and Rec Trust Fund Grant. This is extremely competitive. So this is. Um, so this is another one of those things that we have found that we need to get approval from our Board of Commissioners. It gets us points in our scoring system to help us secure this grant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, these are some numbers that we've come up with. You know, we have a general idea of what the park is going to cost overall, so we broke that down. Hopefully it'll be three phases. It may end up being more. But like I said, this is just to kind of get us started.
Mm-hmm.
And we hope that one of the next things the Town of Anger will get will eventually be a community center. Um, and so we just put a number on that to kind of get us going. But like I said, this is just something to get us going and help us aim for and check a box for our part of grant.
All right. Any questions for Austin on part A? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the Parks and Rec Capital Improvement Plan as presented.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Part B?
All right, part B. So, this is getting more into the nuts and bolts. Um, and we'll go into even more detail on plug for Thursday night at six-thirty right here in the boardroom. Uh, we'll have Withers Ravanell who's helping us do all this and explain in detail what we're really looking at. But this is just really to get us another thing that we've got to have board approval on, another box to check for our scoring system. Uh, and it just kind of lays out, you know, everything we're doing in phase one, what we're going to spend the five hundred thousand match, what we're going to spend the town's five hundred thousand on. And just showing everything that we're going to put in on phase one with that money. Um, duh, 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 duh. I think that's everything. Do y'all have any questions for me on that one?
What day did you say that was? It's a Thursday?
Thursday, the third.
The third.
I'm gonna grill him for some more details on that. I'm not letting you down until we talk about that, but.
And at what time?
Six-thirty. Yes, ma'am.
If anybody asks, we ask them that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. If there's no discussion or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the Park Recreation Capital Improvement Plan, part B. Is that good enough?
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. All right. So, please, for me and anyone else, explain to us what this part F meeting Thursday night is going to look like.
So, we'll have a nice slideshow to show some pictures of what the land looks like currently.
Mm-hmm.
We'll have some, hopefully, future plans of what it's going to look like. And we'll just have a lot more details about all the public input meetings we've done over the last three years. And like I said, it's just putting everything together. The application's due to part of on May first. We're hoping to have everything on our end done on April fifteenth, so we can sit down, double-check, make sure we check all our points and then send it off. And like I said, it's extremely competitive, so we just want to make sure we get it.
Is this the kind of meeting that I need to call to order and convene or is it more of an informal?
It's, yeah, it's very informal.
Okay.
You know, we'll be here.
I'll be here. I just need to know if I'm wearing my bow tie or not.
That's up to you. If you want to wear it, please do.
Is it floating? Can people come in and out or do they have to be here at six-thirty? And it's until when?
Till we finish. I, I would assume it's probably going to be an hour.
Okay.
Um, you know, it may, you know, depending on how many people show up, there might be a lot of questions.
All right.
Be here as long as, long as anybody needs us.
Let's try to make it here by seven-thirty. All right. Thank you, Austin.
Thank you, guys.
Derek, we have you back for number six. Which is the audit contract.
Um, and we'll probably be coming to you here in the next few months with a capital project ordinance for the new park as well. We hope, knock on wood, we hope so. Um, this is the, uh, this is the, um, audit contract for the physical year we're in right now. Um, for them to come in, in the fall and hopefully we'll get it done a little better timely manner next, for this physical year since we're a little more organized than we were.
Twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yes.
So, that's, there's a typo in the agenda. Says twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay.
I'm just clarifying.
The amount will be in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Okay.
It'll be, yeah. The financial impact pack will be in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, but the, they'll be auditing this current budget cycle.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we will have that in the, in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, that amount for the audit contract. And it's the same company that we've used, that we've used in the past few years and this year. Um, and they were, they were really good with us, very patient. Um, easy to work with, so we would like to continue if it would be, be you guys' blessing on that.
Okay. Any questions for Derek?
Bless you.
No, I'm sugar-coated.
All right, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion for the audit contract considering the approval of twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, fiscal year, um, to go with Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams and Company.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Thank you, Derek.
Yep.
All right, we're going to move to staff reports. Are there any staff that would like to present anything from their report? If not, all their reports are included in our agenda from each department. You're welcome to go see that. We'll move to mayor and town board reports. And so I will go through birthdays and stuff again because that's fun. This month, uh, Ms. Veronica Hardaway, our HR Director, has a birthday. Officer Hawkins, Andrew Police Department, has got a birthday this month. My birthday is this month. I'll be thirty-five again. And, uh, Ms. Shelby Blackman is not employee of the town. Um, but her birthday is also this month, so I wanted to point that out. Um, it's my understanding that we have an anniversary in the audience tonight. The Cari's, congratulations. Another birthday? Who's that? Mindy Strohmeyer has a birthday this month. Anyone else? Oh, Courtney, yeah, my wife. Her birthday is before mine. It's her birth month, so really, I I didn't think we were going to digress that far, but here we are. So, all right, I'm going to hit, there, there, there were no staff anniversaries. Nobody was hired in April in the history that I have for the town. So, that's kind of weird, but, all right. Events, there's a lot of them. I'll go through them quickly here. They can all be found online for more details. Uh, this Thursday, we have that part F public meeting right here, Thursday night, six-thirty to seven-thirty. April fourth, Friday, we have the budget retreat from nine to four, right here in this room. Uh, also on April fourth, there is a ribbon cutting for ARO Concrete. Uh, that will be at the Chamber of Commerce. April tenth is our first concert at the depot, uh, featuring Thief of Hearts. So, join us for that. April twelfth, Andrew Police Department will be doing the plane pull for the Special Olympics at the RDU Airport. April thirteenth, the town has our Easter egg hunt and spring fling, starting at two PM, Jack Marley Park. April sixteenth, there's a ribbon cutting for Paw Avenue at twelve PM, one sixty-six North Raleigh Street, Unit A. I'm getting there, guys. April twenty-second, we are doing the spring litter sweep in conjunction with Keep Hart Beautiful, but we are kind of doing our own. We will meet at nine AM at the depot and see how many we can get to join us and then make an attack plan. So, please, if you've got time that day, join us out there for a cleanup. We did it last year. It was a lot of fun. April twenty-fourth, uh, Tip a Cop at Napper Tandies for Special Olympics. So, join them down there. Uh, on the same night, April twenty-fourth is our next concert at the depot, featuring the Clearwater Band. And April twenty-fifth, there's another ribbon cutting at twelve PM for Wildflower Cottage Bookstore, twelve East Depot Street, right here in downtown.
What day is that?
That April twenty-fifth. Oh, I didn't write the day of the week.
It's okay. And I was going to ask you, the, there's about three events before you got to the plane pull.
Mm-hmm.
One of them specifically the concrete company.
Yes.
What is the date on that?
Uh, that is April fourth, this Friday. And I have written twelve PM, though I will probably independently confirm that because I thought it was going to be after. I believe it's after our budget retreat, so we could be there. Um, did you want the other ribbon cutting?
Yes.
Okay, the other ribbon cutting that I have was for Paw Avenue.
That's the sixteen.
That's April sixteenth, twelve PM at one sixty, one sixty-six North Raleigh Street, Unit A. All right, that is what I have for mayor's report. Any commissioners have anything they would like to add tonight?
I do. Um, and I never get to say anything and mine's a lot more boring. Um, but I have been attending classes and participating with, um, councils of government that we are a member of, and I thought I would share a little bit about what I've learned. Um, so the first class that I attended was evaluating manager and board. Um, at the time, we had a manager, but I also was curious about how does a board evaluate itself? Um, I brought for my colleagues, for the manager as well as Liz, and she'll put it into the record. Um, the School of Government created a governing board quick scan, and it's a self-evaluation tool that allows for board members to kind of take the temperature of what you think the board is achieving. So, you'll see that there. Um, I thought the questions, they really made me think, um, and it kind of, kind of keep us in check. Um, another one that I attended was called In the Hot Seat Leading Through Public Scrutiny. Um, and Chief, I would recommend if you've never heard of Mark Weaver, that you, um, learn a little bit. That he does classes for crisis management. He helps you build a team. Um, he, he has law enforcement specific ones. He has ones for elected officials. He gave us this card, which was interesting. Um, but it kind of allows you to be prepared in the event of a crisis. You know, know who necessarily needs to be at the table when you're talking about, um, something serious happening in Anger. And though we don't want that to happen, it's good to have a plan. Um, and then the last thing was the Mid Carolina Regional Council. So, we are a member of this council of government. We are, we joined it this past year and with our membership, they have one hundred percent participation across Harney, Sampson and Cumberland Counties. Ooh, I had to stumble on that one a little bit. Um, but they just did their annual meeting last week and I was in attendance. And they gave an impact report of which I'm going to give to Liz and I'm sure she'll scan it into the record, but, um, lots of great data about what they're doing, um, with their local government services, their agency on aging, as well as their workforce development initiatives, which have, um, increased a lot, uh, with, especially as it pertains to kids in school. Um, so I just thought I would share that this, this one's out and about. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Anyone else tonight? Anything to share?
Um, I just wanted to inform the board that we have extended an offer to a finance director. And he has accepted, but we will be able to, um, share more information this Friday.
Okay.
We just didn't want to throw out her name until she's had time to, um, do everything on her side as far as obligations with notices and whatnot.
Sure.
And we have been in constant conversation with Richard Hicks. Um, and I actually talked to him last week. And we're trying to get a game plan together now with him.
All right.
Now, did we make a decision about that?
Hmm.
Did we make a decision about Richard?
Did we make it? No.
Yeah, so, okay.
I, I'm just in a conversation right now and trying to find out what the cost would be.
All right. Anything else to add? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion that we adjourn.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. We are adjourned.